June 25, 2020, meeting to order. This is for the interview of candidates for Board Attorney for the 2020-2021 school year. Could I please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening, Lacy Township. Please rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a good evening.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on Thursday, June 18, 2020, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, the Ocean County Library Lacy Branch, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Mr. George, roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
I am present, thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Unmute, Donna.
I'm sorry, I am here.
Mr. Polino. Mrs. DeSensa.
Mrs. DeSensa is present.
Mr. Riggs.
Present.
Mrs. Downing.
Present.
We have a call.
Okay, so tonight I would like to welcome everyone to the June 25 special meeting. I'd like to welcome our six law firms that are participating tonight. We have with us Campbell and Prutchnek. Francis Campbell and Robert Prutchnek are participating. We have Capehart, Skatchard, sorry if I pronounced it incorrectly, with Joseph Bentley participating. We have Coronado Law with Joseph Coronado Senior participating. Dasty and Associates with Christopher Dasty participating. Dasty, Murphy, McGuckin, Yulaki, Katuris, Cusaurus, and Connors, and I'm so sorry if I pronounce that incorrectly. Jerry Dasty and Tom Monahan are presenting. And Stein, Subsy, and Tedeschi for Christopher Subsy will be participating. So, welcome to all our candidates. They can't hear us right now, I don't believe, but we'd like to welcome them and thank them for showing an interest in our school district and wanting to be a part of it. So, I'd like to now turn it over to the Superintendent, Dr. Clark. Would you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you, President Downing. I too wanted to welcome the law firms who are participating tonight, and I also wanted to welcome the public in this process, and I wish everybody well, and I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Downing, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to interview each of the six law firms, after which we will go into private session, and we will choose, hopefully choose, an attorney to represent our district, and then we will be back out after private session for a public comment, and then appointment of the Board Attorney. So, at this time, Mr. Merman will be facilitating the in and outs of our guests. So, at this time, Mr. Merman, you can let number one, Campbell and Prutchnek Law Firm.
Ms. Downing, can I comment before we start, please?
Sure, Mr. Peters.
We just want the public to know that each candidate is going to be asked six questions, and they're all the same questions.
Thank you. Same questions, all six.
Yes, they're all the same exact questions. All candidates will be asked the same six questions.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Merman.
They're here, Mrs. Downing.
Okay, so, Mr. Peters, welcome. First of all, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Prutchnek. Welcome, we're happy you could join us, and we have five questions for you. Each of our Board members will be asking you a question, so take your time, answer as long as you want, and again, thank you for participating. Mr. Peters, would you like to ask the first question?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, gentlemen. The first question is going to be, please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know about the firm you represent.
Well, our law firm is called Campbell and Prutchnek. This is Francis Campbell, Frank Campbell, I'm usually called, and I'm one of the partners. Rob Prutchnek and I worked in a school law firm together before we actually formed a part of our own firm. We also have two other attorneys. One is my brother, former Superior Court Judge Donald Campbell, and my niece, his daughter, Laura Shroba, is also in our firm. And so, Rob and I do most of the schoolwork, and we've been partners for a long time now.
Yes, I would highlight the fact that Frank and I have been working as school law attorneys. We've known each other as school law attorneys for the past 25 years. We first started working together in a school law firm in Red Bank, Kenny Gross, Kovats, Campbell, and Prutchnek. That's where we first started working together. And then, as indicated in our firm resume, at one point, both Frank and I left our previous firm. Frank went to work for another school law firm in Red Bank, and I went to work for a school law firm out in Mooresville, New Jersey. And then subsequently, I became Assistant General Counsel for the Jersey City Public Schools. I was in-house counsel there. And then, we got back together approximately two years ago, and that's when we began formally starting our new firm, Campbell and Prutchnek, collectively. And maybe I shouldn't say it, because it dates us perhaps, but we've, collectively, we have 70 years' experience as practicing attorneys and 60 years' experience collectively as school law attorneys. We've represented districts of every conceivable size. As you know, Jersey City is the second-largest public school district in the state of New Jersey. We've represented K-8 districts, K-12 districts like yours, regional school districts. So, we have a wide array of experience in this field, and I believe if you were to appoint us as Board Attorney, you would definitely benefit from our experience on a whole host of issues. I don't think there's, there's probably not an issue we haven't dealt with, and, you know, we don't need to spend vast hours researching, you know, any issues that, you know, Dr. Clark as the Superintendent might pose to us, or Ms. Downing, you as the Board President, or Mr. George as the SBA. So, we would, we really think that we could be a great addition to your district. Thank you very much.
I think I should mention that I am the former General Counsel of the New Jersey School Boards Association, so I have a wide array of experience from that position, which I held with the NJ SBA, and of course, I have close contacts with the New Jersey School Boards Association through the present time.
Thank you. Okay, question number two would be Mr. Polino. Oh, Mr. Polino, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to ask question number two?
Absolutely. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight. So, question number two, the proposal requires a successful firm to have at least five years of current experience providing general school board attorney services in the state of New Jersey. Please tell us about your most recent experience and how long.
Well, we continuously have been representing school districts for going back many, many years, and of course, as I mentioned, I also served as the General Counsel and Assistant Executive Director to your state association, and we've been, you've been representing school boards since you started practice, right?
Yes, I've been, I've been representing school districts throughout the state of New Jersey since being admitted to the bar in 1994. That's when I first met Mr. Campbell, and then we, he was with another firm at that time. We had some, you know, different matters that we actually handled together. I can think of a few occasions when his firm would ask me to come in as Special Counsel because his previous firm had a conflict, and as I say, we started working together, I believe it was in the year 2000. So, we've been working together now for 20 years, give or take a few years when we were, you know, doing some, you know, as I say, myself working for the Jersey City Public Schools, and Mr. Campbell working for another school law firm in Red Bank, the Reyes Seal Law Firm. So, we've, as we've been, and Mr. Campbell, I guess, has been doing school law, practicing school law since probably the mid-1980s, if I'm not mistaken. So, we have a lot of experience in this area. Most recently, I was, served as Special Education Counsel to the Jackson Township Public Schools, or General Counsel currently to the Point Pleasant Beach Public School District, and that work includes both Board Counsel work, if you will, and Special Education Counsel work, as well as some labor work, I would add.
We also serve as Special Counsel on rather particularized issues involving regional school districts that have been separating, and sometimes you represent the township, but they hire you because you're an education lawyer. And one of the towns that I represented recently is a neighbor of yours, the Berkeley Township. The township of Berkeley actually was who is my client, but it was the regional school district dispute involving the central regional school district. I was opposing any split off from that district because that's what I believe the law actually qualifies. If you look at the statutes very carefully, it's very, very difficult unless you have a referendum that passes, and of course, it did not pass in the Berkeley Township school districts, the central regional school district, which I understand, you know, I know happened, happen to know that Lacy was part of that regional before it split off and built its own high school and became a K-12 district, or it must be back in the 70s when that happened.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a very wide range of experience through all types of districts, and I still represent some districts in those regional school district disputes.
Thank you very much. Okay, question number three will be Mrs. McAvoy.
Hi, and thank you for coming. Please tell us about your experience handling general contract work as well as student discipline matters.
Well, I think we all, you know, we all end up handling student discipline matters, and I've had a range of different types of school discipline matters, and most of what we, I believe, most of the well-run school districts like yours, I'm sure, really depend on the school administrators, the principals of the school district, and of course, the Superintendent of the school district. So, most of our job is giving advice so that there aren't litigated cases involving students who are misbehaving. So, really, the key is, is I believe, in our being able to give advice early on to even building-level administrators on how to handle various disciplinary types of cases, sometimes involving school bullying. That's, that's been a pretty common problem in different places, but good administration, I think, is part of it, and we advise the administrators on what we think are the steps that should be taken to prevent cases from being litigated, and we've been very successful at doing that.
Yes, I would add, you know, that the consultation closely with the Superintendent, and of course, the Assistant Superintendent, the principals. As you can imagine, during my, the period of time I spent in the Jersey City Public Schools, my phone was ringing off the hook every single day with some disciplinary issues. And the important, the important lesson that I tried to impart to the administration was that, you know, better to, you know, take a pause, hit the pause button, consult with your Board Attorney, or in my case, as Assistant General Counsel, so as to avoid any missteps, any unwanted ramifications, or controversial, or controversies. You know, it, you know, that's, doesn't take long to discuss those types of things, and, you know, it's always good to at least, you know, as I say, hit the pause button, have a discussion with the Board Attorney, make sure we're headed down the right road, so, you know, we don't, we don't get ourselves in a situation that, you know, could be problematic, or as Mr. Campbell said, you know, unnecessarily litigious, you know, we want to avoid those things.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to question number four will be Mr. Scanlon.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for participating tonight. I have a two-part question. How do you view the relationship between the Board Attorney and the Board of Education? What about the Board Attorney's relationship with the senior district administration?
Certainly, the client, it's very clear, the client is the Board itself. So, you have a seven-member Board, and the Board is really the client for the Board Attorney. However, as you realize too, that, and I'm sure the Superintendent can tell you this, that most of the interactions in our experience with Boards, and you have a great deal of experience, are with the chief school administrator, the Superintendent, and with the business administrator on business types of issues. So, while your day-to-day interactions are clearly with the administrators most of the time, that nevertheless, the client is the policymaking body, which is the Board of Education. I sat on a seven-member Board for a number of years before I joined the School Boards Association many years ago, and as a matter of fact, I actually served as the Ocean County School Boards Association President as a Board Member for a couple of years, going way back. That's why I know the captains in so well, so.
And I, and I would add that if it's your practice to have the Board Attorney present at your Board meetings, and, you know, there's certainly a good opportunity during executive session, you know, to discuss with you folks any issues or concerns that you have as a Board. You know, you know, we like to, you know, give a, prior to any Board meeting, give a status report to the Board of Ed on, you know, any, whether it's matters, pending matters of litigation, or any other important matters in terms of legislative updates. I guess tomorrow at 1:00, we'll be all, all be in front of our TVs to see what the Governor decides about reopening. So, you know, we like to make sure that the Board, even though we're having, as Mr. Campbell indicated, probably daily contact with the administration, the Superintendent, the school business administrator, but to make sure that you folks are being updated, at least on a monthly basis, at a minimum.
Okay, thank you very much, and the last question, number five, will be asked by Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Downing. Hello, gentlemen. My name is Mrs. DeSensa. Please tell us one thing which sets your firm apart from any other, and why we should select you to be the next General Board Attorney for Lacy Township.
Well, I think we have a breadth of experience that is very difficult to rival, and my, you know, as Rob was saying, I started representing school districts in about 1981, after I had been a school Board Member and the Ocean County School Boards Association President, you know, before that. So, our experience goes back very, very far, and also, it's a statewide experience by reason of my continuing contacts with the General Counsel, the present General Counsel at the New Jersey School Boards Association. I'm a longtime friend of Mike Kelber, who had been lead attorney there, and he's a, both of them are personal friends of mine. I was at the firm when we engaged Mike Kelber, so I was the General Counsel at that time. So, the contacts that we have, by the way, one of the things that we do have, and she's not on the letterhead anymore, but she still confers with us whenever we pick up the phone and call her, because she's retired from school law, but Rosalyn Novak, who is the former counsel to the State Board of Education for more than 20 years, she must have written about, I think she estimated to me once, it was about 3,400 opinions, that were for the, the chief agency for the state of New Jersey, which was, at that time, the State Board of Education. They no longer handle any litigation since she retired. It is now, the litigation stops with the Commissioner of Education now. But Rosalyn is just a great resource, just because so often we found that she had written decisions that were right on point, so I consult with her even now.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I would add, as Mr. Campbell indicated, our, the length of years that we have collectively as school law attorneys, it's what we do, it's, it's what we spend 100% of our time working at. You know, although we, our approach is to make sure that we can avoid having the district, the Board of Education, brought into litigation, but, you know, when we've had to do that, when it's been unavoidable, we've been highly successful in appearing in the office of administrative law and winning cases before administrative law judges and the Commissioner of Education. And so, it's all that we do, as I mentioned before. I think you, you as a district would benefit from our dedication and experience. And I would also add that at times, it's been very helpful to have Mr. Campbell's brother, Judge Campbell, retired Ocean County Superior Court Judge, available in the firm. You know, there are times when we do need his advice, and his advice can be very helpful on, you know, not, not, it's a rare occasion, but it's a resource that's there, and that can be very helpful as well. He, as a retired judge, has a tremendous amount of insights and, and good advice, because there are times when school districts do have matters that arise in Superior Court.
I want to compliment the Board also that you involve all of your Board members. That's a very, very good sign.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, gentlemen, I, first of all, Mr., I want to apologize for saying your name wrong. It's Pruchek. Did I say it right this time?
Prutchnek.
Prutchnek, okay, so I want to apologize for that, and I want to thank both, I want to thank both of you for spending the time with us and answering our questions, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Downing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merman?
Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to put you back on hold at this time. If you do want to stick around, once the Board goes into private session, I'll bring you back in as attendees so you can see the rest of the meeting, but at this time, you'll go back on hold.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Downing, Capehart, Skatchard will be next.
Yes, let me know when.
Okay, Mrs. Downing, I can see that they're here. It looks like they've unmuted their microphone. I think you're good to go.
Okay, good evening, gentlemen, and ma'ams. I want to welcome, we have Joseph Bentley, am I correct? There you are. Okay, and who do you have with you?
Hi, this is Sanu Dev, also an attorney at Capehart and Skatchard in the School Law Department.
Okay, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. What we're going to do is we're going to ask you five questions. Each of the Board members will be asking one of the questions as we move along, so we're going to start with our first question with Mr. Peters.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know about the firm you represent.
Great, well, welcome. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to interview with you. Like I said, my name is Sanu Dev. I am a shareholder in the School Law Department, and with me is Joe Bentley, who is the Chair of our School Law Department at Capehart and Skatchard. We are a full-service law firm. We're about 88 attorneys right now, and in our School Law Department, we have about five to six full-time attorneys who devote their practice almost entirely to school law, where we represent public school districts in various capacities, many of which are Board Solicitor, Labor and Employment Counsel, Special Education Counsel, Litigation Counsel, et cetera. But, like I said, at least five of us devote almost entirely to the school law practice. Capehart and Skatchard in general, we have deep roots in New Jersey. We're almost 100 years old, that's how long we've been in New Jersey, and we do all areas of civil law, including real estate, business law, tax, and oftentimes, we rely upon the attorneys in our other departments to assist with particularly property lease agreements, tax issues, and things like that. So, we have the manpower, so to speak, to service a large district like yours, where we are readily available for all of your needs, and I'll let Joe speak a little bit more about the firm.
Yeah, thanks, Sanu. That's a tough act to follow. Again, my name is Joe Bentley. I've been with Capehart and Skatchard going on my 36th year, coming up in September. All those years, I've been doing school law exclusively for school districts. One thing to add to Sanu is I think we have seen pretty much most of, not all, of issues that arise, although the last four or five months have been very, very challenging. I love what I do. I love the fact that the clients that we have are very, sometimes very challenging with their issues. It's certainly not a, it's not boring, what we do, but every single day, I wake up and we can face a, an issue that is of constitutional significance. Every day, there's, there's something that you as a school district need, and want for our services, and I think we can provide that. I think we've seen pretty much everything, anything out there, most of the things we can hopefully answer very quickly, and we give you good counsel based upon that experience. You don't need a lawyer who's just going to look up the statute and the code and regurgitate that statute and code to you. You need someone who's going to give you the advice that you need to run your district and keep you out of trouble, and if you do get in trouble, we're there to defend you with all, with all the vigor that we have.
Okay, thank you very much. Question number two is Mr. Polino. Thank you, Frank.
Good evening, folks. Thank you for joining us. So, I have a couple-part question here I want to ask. Good evening, folks. Thank you for joining us. So I have a couple part question here I want to ask. The request for proposal which requires a successful firm to have at least five years of current experience providing general school board attorney services in the state of New Jersey. Please tell us about your experience. Give us some recent schools that you're dealing with currently. How long have you been dealing with these schools? And the follow-up question I'm going to add to this, you're such a large firm. Do we have a lead direct attorney that's going to be at our disposal? Or is it going to be when we call their dial one for this, dial two for that, dial three for this, and we'll get somebody to call us back? So such a large firm, are we going to have somebody directly dealing with us?
Yeah, I'll handle the first part of your question. Right now, we have probably about 25 or 30 districts throughout New Jersey that we represent. One of my major clients is Washington Township in Gloucester County. I also have smaller districts, the Colonial Conference, Districts Haddon Heights, Haddon Township, Gateway, West Effort, Logan Township, Palmyra, those types of things. We have a full variety of districts that we represent. Sanu also represents the largest district of Monroe Township, again, in Gloucester County. So we have, and we've had those clients for a number of years. I'm very proud of the fact that those clients have been with the firm for most of my existence here. And we intend to keep them and hopefully add Lacy Township. Why don't you go and talk about the contacts?
Sure. And I'll just also add, because one of the questions was how much experience we have in school law. Like Joe mentioned, you know, he's been with the firm for at least 30 years. And of those 30 years, he's practiced primarily and almost entirely school law. And I've been with the firm for seven years practicing school law as well. And prior to that, I was practicing school law at a different firm. So we definitely have the expertise that can provide you with sound legal services. And to answer your question about who would be the lead attorney, that would be myself. And you won't get a secretary to answer my phone. If you call my office line, it goes directly to my desk. And right now, since we're mostly working remotely, it goes directly to my cellphone. Otherwise, I would give you my cellphone anyway, and you can call me at all hours of the day. I am always accessible. I've, you know, developed strong relationships with clients to the point where we can feel comfortable texting each other. Sometimes I might be in a meeting, I'll get a text message, can you call me when you're done? Okay, I'll give you, it should be another hour, and I'll call you right away. You won't see us waiting even a day to call you back unless, you know, we're physically somewhere else and don't have access to our phone or internet. With that, also, you'll have a backup attorney that will be Joe Bentley. So, and we work very, very closely together. So if one of us is not available, the other one will be, and will be able to handle any of your issues that do arise. And we recognize that there are times where there are emergent issues, and we take that very seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question number three will be asked by Mrs. McAvoy.
Hi, thank you for coming. Please tell us about your experience handling general contract work as well as student discipline matters.
Okay, I'll take the second part of that question first. Student discipline is something that, you know, we've been heavily involved with, with various school districts. I've personally done trainings for administrators and teachers and staff members on appropriate discipline. And I think that discipline is also overlaps with special education because special education students, whether they're classified under the IDEA or under Section 504, they're afforded an additional set of rights that need to be honored and followed. And so I think student discipline is something that we are very experienced in. And I know that it is being scrutinized by the state and federal governments in terms of disproportionality and our sort of practices that districts are doing. I've also been personally involved in helping districts develop manuals for discipline and as well as for special education issues. So we're definitely well-versed in those type of services. In terms of general contract issues, as a Board Solicitor, right now, I'm dealing with reviewing professional services contracts for other, for an architect or an engineer. I get lease agreements all the time. We get, a lot of these technology agreements are coming into play, Power School or different service providers. What we think is up and coming, or is already up and coming, is the ESA projects and solar projects. The alternative energy and green energy is a new wave of projects that districts are getting into. And I just finished dealing with a major solar project for a district. So we're very capable and willing to help the districts in that regard. Joe, do you have anything else?
No, that was pretty good. I've handled dozens of student discipline hearings, all the way up through administration and to the board level, as well as any other appeals. So if there's any type of board hearing regarding committee or ever got student discipline, we're there. We can run those hearings. We often do run those hearings. So that's something that we have a tremendous amount of experience with, as well as the contracts, in terms of reviewing those contracts, making sure your identification provisions are there, and insurance provisions are there with third-party vendors, with other entities, other educational entities, and so forth. So we've looked at and reviewed the gamut of all those particular contracts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next question will be asked by Mr. Scanlon.
Good evening, and thank you for participating tonight. My question is, how would you view the relationship between the Board Attorney and the Board of Education? Also, what about the relationship of the Board Attorney and the senior district administrator?
That's a good question. And then thank you again for having us. We're here to provide services to the board. We counsel the board. The administration is a liaison to the board and advises the board. And we will support the administrators when they have legal issues that arise. But ultimately, our direction comes from the board. Do you want to add anything?
That's, that's, that's the key. We, again, we deal with the, with the chief school minister, the BA, assistant superintendents, sometimes principals, a lot. They're our main contact. But we always remember that the board is the client, and we report to you. And we, that's where our allegiance lies. You are, you are the client, even though we have to deal with your, with your chief operating officer, your chief financial officer all the time. But the board is our client.
Okay, and your last question is being presented by Mrs. DeSenza.
Good evening. Hi. Please tell us one thing which sets your firm apart from any other, and why we should select you to be the next General Board Attorney for the Lacy Township School District.
Yeah, I think we offer you the combination of, as I said, experience, energy, the, the technology. The, we have depth for, for somebody, somebody like Lacy, that we, there's, there's nothing that we can't handle for you. We have attorneys in our office for any other type of issue, land use, real estate, workers' comp, liability. We have all of that in one easy package. And I also think that when we speak to you, when we give advice, we don't talk in legalese. We give you sound advice. We give it in language, and that you can understand and direct. And we give you counsel, and it's effective and efficient. I think we offer, I think we have the most talented group of attorneys in the state of New Jersey. We don't talk like lawyers, but we do know the law, and we want to give you, and I think we give you the best advice out there.
And I'll just add that we add a level of passion to school law. All of us in school genuinely enjoy this practice. We enjoy the relationship that we build with Boards of Education, who are in the, in the business of educating children, right? And to that end, we take that role very seriously, and not just with our clients, but in the school law community. One of the ways we do that is, for example, I have a school law blog. It's called ngsschoollawblog.com. And I write articles, I try to do it every two weeks, on case law that's relevant, statutes that are relevant, that are new, that are going to be affecting school districts across New Jersey. And I do that in addition to my school law practice, because I enjoy it. I think it's rewarding, and I think it's necessary to keep up with everything. In addition to that, we, as a firm, are very involved in the New Jersey School Boards Association. Pretty much every year, we are presenters at the annual School Law Forum in October. We're very active in that. One of our attorneys is the trustee, one of the trustees on that school board, New Jersey School Board Committee. Joe Bentley is often a speaker almost yearly at the New Jersey ASVO Conference. And I myself attend a lot of the school law conferences to present on, we've presented on Oprah, we've presented on student discipline, special education, contracts, you name it. So I think that also sets us apart. And we also provide a lot of training to districts, too. A lot of the questions that we get is, you know, how do we train our folks to prevent litigation? And we do that in a very unique way, where we sit down with your administrators, sometimes board members, and try to narrow down what are the reoccurring issues? And how do we prevent that? How do we educate the people who are in charge to make the right decision? So we're not ending up in the same legal situation.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate both, both of you coming tonight. We enjoyed your answers. Thank you. And you can stay on. You'll be put back by Mr. Merman, but you can stay on for later if you'd like, for the rest of them. Thank you. Mr. Merman?
Okay, so I'm going to put you on hold right now, ladies and gentlemen. Like Mrs. Downing said, you can stick around. I'll put you back on once the board is in private session. All right, Mrs. Downing, we're going to Coronado Law next.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Coronado. You're on mute, just so you know.
Okay, now I'm not. How's that? Right?
Now we can hear you, but we can't see you.
How's that?
There we go. That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
And welcome, and thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. We're going to have five questions asked by five different board members.
Okay.
And we're going to start with Mr. Peters. He's going to ask you question number one.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know about the firm you represent.
Okay, well, my name is Joe Coronado. I've been an attorney for 40-plus years. I started a firm, I was the county prosecutor for just a little over five and a half years. After leaving the county prosecutor's office, I took some time off. And my son, who is an Assistant Attorney General down in Florida, who was also licensed in New Jersey, him and I had some discussion, and we decided that we would start a firm together. So, you know, kind of got me out of the house a little bit. I decided that it was, it was, it would be, it'd be great to work with my son. And I have to tell you, it's been fantastic. We've been growing our practice. One of the things I've always prided myself is that, is that whenever I do anything, I do it myself. But you always do need backup, and my son would be, would be that individual. I think they were both very capable attorneys. I know that he has sharpened his litigator skills, both here in New Jersey and Florida. And I think that so far as my resume is concerned, you could see that it's a, it's a well-rounded resume.
Thank you very much.
That's kind of where I am with the firm. And I, and, you know, we have obtained several governmental jobs right now. But, you know, I'm pretty selective as what jobs I'm going to take, because essentially, you know, I do the work. I do have my son. He does assist me. But basically, you know, we're not going to spread ourselves too thin.
Okay, thank you. Onto question number two will be Mr. Polino.
Good evening, Mr. Coronado. Frank Polino, thank you for joining us. Good to see you, sir.
Good seeing you, Frank. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. So question number two, there's a couple parts here. So the request for the proposal requires the successful firm to have at least five years of current experience providing general school board attorney services in the state of New Jersey. So please tell us about your experience, your firm's experience directly with school boards, and whom you may have served in the last five years.
Okay, well, clearly, I have not in the last five years been a school board attorney, because obviously, I've been the county prosecutor. But I do have five years, at least five years worth of work. I was certainly the school board attorney down in Barnicot Township for three years. And then I was the, also the school board attorney in Little Lake Harbor for, I guess, from 2010 to 2013, when I became prosecutor. Prior to that, I was also the school board attorney in the Pine Lands District. So I pretty much have been, and that's primary school boards. Other school boards have used me, I guess, for litigation purposes and for other purposes. But I haven't, and, you know, obviously, in the last five years, I have not been in, been in the private practice, so I can't comply technically with that. But I do think, I certainly know school board work. I've done it, and I believe that I qualify. One other thing I will tell you is that as the county prosecutor, I met every single month with all the, the school board superintendents. I was very, very, very interactive with the school boards. I put in programs as a prosecutor for school boards. We are one of the first and few counties in the entire United States to map out all the schools. I know that Lacy has the GXP mapping. I've done many, I've worked, you know, with Vanessa and other, other superintendents so far as Red Night Out, other programs that have taken place. So to me, even though I wasn't a school board attorney, I was pretty much interactive with the school boards. And you could see that. That's why I got, you know, Vincent Smith, who was one of the presidents of the superintendents of schools in Ocean County, to write a letter of recommendation verifying the fact that I was an integral part of, of the, of school education as a prosecutor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to question number three, Mrs. McAvoy.
Hi, Mr. Coronado. Please tell us about your experience handling general contract work as well as student discipline matters.
Okay, well, I, over the years, I've had many, I've represented many different, Lacy Planning Board, other boards. You could see from my resume that I certainly have done planning boards and Board of Adjustments. As a result, I've represented many kind of contractors, both on the, on the plaintiff's side and on the defense side. So when it comes to contract work, I have done a lot of litigation with regard to that. Also, as the county prosecutor, I can tell you that I've negotiated contracts with both with the detectives, with the, with all the personnel within, at 200 and about 220 employees as a prosecutor. So I had different unions that I had to negotiate with. And also, as a school board attorney, I certainly negotiated contracts with the Teachers Union, both with the janitors and with all the, you know, the administrative personnel. So when it comes to contract work, both on the labor issue and also with, with contractors themselves, with buildings and such, I'm pretty astute, have done that work, and I feel very comfortable. And I've litigated it. So not only, you know, have I negotiated, but I've litigated.
And how about, and the student discipline matters?
Student discipline matters. I was pretty much, especially with, as a prosecutor, I wanted a very close relationship with the, with the administrator, with all the administrator and all the superintendents. all the superintendents, because you have to handle discipline the right way and you have to be, you have to be appropriate. I'll give you a little example as a prosecutor, what I did. There was a young girl who was 13 years old out of Jackson, who, I guess, used her father's state police hat and went on the website and was kind of making Jewish, she dressed up somewhat as a Nazi and made comments about the fact that she was going to go into Lakewood and that there was going to be issues in Lakewood. This is a 13-year-old girl who, after looking at it and contacting, I went into the community in Lakewood. I talked to Steve Junko, who was the superintendent in Jackson. And I knew that even if we litigated it all the way through and we charged her, that eventually what was really going to happen was that there was going to have to be counseling and the appropriate counseling that needed to take place. I was able to get the community to accept it. I got the Lakewood community to accept it. I diffused the situation, which was really important to me. I know I did the right thing and I saved both the school litigation costs, the county litigation costs, and at the very end, everybody was pleased. The point is, is that you need to be able to, you don't want to, you've got to be able to do the right thing and you've got to be able to figure out a way in which to diffuse the situation as best you possibly can, but not ignore the situation. You need to work with the administration, you need to work with the individual, and you need to work within the community to be able to solve the problem. They're not easy. Each one has to be, each case has to be individually assessed and appropriately handled.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. So question number four will be Mr. Scanlon.
Good evening, sir, and thank you for participating tonight.
Thank you.
How would you view the relationship between the board attorney and the Board of Education? And what about the relationship of the board attorney and the senior district administrator?
Well, first off, I think that the board attorney allegiance is to the board, okay? You're representing the members of the school board, what I think is supposed to be as a conduit, a means between being able to express the desires of the board, to be able to work with the administration. I think that you need to have a very close relationship. I think it's something that you have to have always open lines of communication. But your loyalty is to the board, that the board has retained you as their counsel, you are their counsel, and that's kind of where it is. At the same time, you're also representing the school administration in the sense that, you know, if there are problems, you're representing the board and the administration to be able to handle that. So again, you need to be able to make sure that you have good communication between the board president, the members of the board, and also the superintendent.
Okay, Mr. Coronado, your last question will be asked by Mrs. De Senza.
Hello, Mr. Coronado.
Mrs. De Senza, how are you?
Okay, please tell us one thing which sets your firm apart from any other and why we should select you to be the next general board attorney for the Lacey Township School.
Well, one is, I think I certainly have the experience to be a board attorney. But two, I think that I'm well-rounded. I think that my firm is well-rounded. One is that, God forbid, there's litigation, we can handle the litigation. I've been able, I'm an experienced trial attorney on the Superior Court level, on the appellate level, and on the Supreme Court level. I know that my son is also an experienced attorney. He's argued both in the federal circuit, Court of Appeals. He's argued before the Florida Supreme Court. He's argued before the Superior Court in New Jersey. So I've done administrative law work, so I'm good to go with the AOL. The bottom line is, is that, to me, it's my job to keep the board out of trouble. And quite honestly, I think one of the big things I need is that we really have a difficult time. And what I mean by that is that whoever is the school board, hopefully it will be May, but whoever the school board attorney is, coming up in the upcoming months, the board's going to have difficult calls to make with regard of, with the children, the virus, how to handle that, and how to handle the parents, and to be able to diffuse the situation and to be openly able to communicate. I think that's one of the skills I learned as a prosecutor. I think it's one of the skills I've learned, having experience over all the years. And the bottom line is, is that I think that we are the perfect law firm to handle that type of, that type of matter. Not only that, I'm very familiar with Lacey Township. I'm very familiar with Lacey Community. Ocean County is unique and even, Lacey can be unique at different times. Regina, you know that as well as anybody over the years. And the bottom line is, is that, is to guide the board, to give the board good legal representation, but at the same time, is to be practical about it. And again, not to be confrontational. The bottom line is, is to seek an ends that is fair for all parties. I think that there is no better law firm and no better individual than myself to do that. And to indicate, the reason why I mention my son is that primarily, I'm going to be responsible. If I'm the Lacey School Board, I'm going there. You're not going to be getting, you're not going to be getting some sort of associate as it goes through. The bottom line, though, is, is that, God forbid, there's some sort of conflict or I'm unable, or, you know, if my wife convinces me to go on vacation for a period, for a small period of time, you know that there's another capable attorney who can handle that. But the person who's going to be there 95% of the time is Joe Coronado, Sr.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Coronado, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. I look forward to, hoping to hear positively. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Be careful, stay well. Bye-bye.
Yes, you too. Mr. Merman?
Okay, Mr. Coronado, I'm going to put you back on hold, but you can hang around if you'd like. Once the board is in private session, we'll bring you back so that you can watch the rest of the meeting. So we're going to do that right now. And then, Mrs. Downing, we're going to go to Dasty and Associates next, correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Downing, they're here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dasty, you have to unmute your microphone. There you go. Good evening. What we're going to be doing, Mr. Dasty, is we're going to ask five questions from five different board members. And we're going to start with Mr. Peters with question number one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Dasty. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know, we ought to know about the firm you represent.
Sure. Well, I'm born and raised in Lacey Township. I founded my firm about two years ago. I've done public entity work for the entirety of my legal career, be it municipalities, Boards of Education, other boards within municipalities. It's the kind of work I really love to do. I enjoy the interaction with the public, with staff. We are an expanding law firm. I'm proud to say that, you know, we're based here in Lacey Township. You know, and we're continuing to expand and we are doing this type of work. I really do enjoy it and it's something I think that we've gotten pretty good at.
Okay, thank you. Question number two will be presented by Mr. Polino.
Evening, Mr. Dasty. Frank Polino, thank you for joining us tonight. So many questions, a couple parts here. So the request for proposal requires a successful firm to have at least five years of current experience providing general school board attorney services in the state of New Jersey. Please tell us about your recent experiences and how long have you been part of the school districts you've been serving?
Sure. So, I mean, over the years, at the, throughout my legal career, I've represented Boards of Education. I'm currently the Central Regional School District Board Attorney. In the past, I've served that district as special counsel, handling litigation matters. The Central, excuse me, the Berkeley Township Board of Education, I've served the last two and a half years as their conflict attorney. And then at my prior firm, we represented the Barnicot Township Board of Education for about, I think, five or six years, if memory serves. So I would assist there with negotiations, investigations, general day-to-day issues related to schools, be it contract negotiations, HIP investigation, in general, I don't know if that was my computer or not, and general day-to-day issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. Number, question number three will be Mrs. McAvoy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please tell us about your experience handling general contract work as well as student discipline matters.
Sure. So general contract work, you mean day-to-day issues or contract negotiations or both?
Both would be good.
Sure. So day-to-day, I mean, certainly if there's issues with the board, the board secretary contacts me. I have the opinion of, I'd like to try to get the answer that day because I know public entities, you know, need the answer then. A lot of it is pressing issues. And when an issue arises, it needs to be addressed. So in terms of day-to-day operations, day-to-day issues, you know, be it with schools or governing bodies, I'm always available. You know, every client I have, I think, has my cell phone number. So, you know, if I don't know the answer, I know how to find the answer. So one of the things I try to pride myself on is being always available. And certainly, that makes it interesting at home, but that's one of the things you just have to do. Regarding contractual negotiations, I've done those in the past for public entities. Privilege to serve as labor counsel for a number of public entities. So whether it be a collective bargaining negotiation, or there's a grievance filed by the union, I'm well-versed in, you know, handling those matters. In terms of bullying investigations, unfortunately, I've done a few of those and they are, the discipline issues. Unfortunately, I've done a few of those and certainly, you know, it's, you kind of have to tread lightly. My experience, I've tried to kind of work with the parents or the child representatives as much as possible, just because I think everybody, in those situations, everybody wants it to be the best outcome, you know? So, you know, the children are entitled to their due process if it's a major discipline. And you just kind of have to do the best you can to try to put the needs, obviously, of the district first, but also you're dealing with a minor, you know? So try to kind of guide as best you can, I guess, is the best answer I can give.
Okay, thank you. Question number four, Mr. Scanlon, would you please?
Good evening and thank you for participating tonight.
Pleasure.
Two-part question. How do you view the relationship between the board attorney and the Board of Education? And what about the relationship between the board attorney and the senior district administration?
Well, at the end of the day, the board attorney is an employee, right? So you're there to serve. You're hired by the district, by the Board of Education. But you need to, you know, realize that you're all on the same team, right? You're all there to serve the district, certainly the kids, and the taxpayers. So you get your instructions from the, you know, the board certainly, and that's the client that's hired you. But I think that, you know, in any large entity, you want to be on the same team and you need to have open lines of communication because at the end of the day, it saves time. I mean, there's no use, you know, telling one person one thing and another district staff something else. You're all in it for the right reasons because if you wouldn't, if you weren't, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So I think it's important that everybody work together. And, you know, I think an attorney in any setting needs to understand that they're hired by the client and they serve at the pleasure of the client. And they have to do everything that they can to answer the client's needs in a responsive and efficient way.
Hey, thank you, Chris. Moving on to question number five, this is your last question. Mrs. De Senza, will you please ask it?
Yes, thank you. Hello, sir.
Hi.
Please tell us the one thing that sets your firm apart from any other and why we should select you to be the next general board attorney for the Lacey Township School.
I would say I am tenacious in every respect. Hungry, I enjoy hard work. You know, this is my home and I take great pride in being able to, or I would take great pride being able to represent an entity in my own hometown. Extremely hardworking, our firm is expanding. This is the type of work that I want to do and that I've made my life doing and that I'm prepared to do. One of the things that, you know, I pride myself is on, you'll never find anybody that's going to work harder. We're mornings, late nights, weekends, I just love this kind of work. I love being able to guide clients through issues. I think representing public entities, your most important job is to identify small fires before they become forest fires. That serves the client, certainly serves the taxpayers, and it serves your own interests as well because why create more work for yourself and not represent your clients adequately? So that really is it, Ms. De Senza. You would never find anybody who would work harder.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Dasty, that's the five questions.
Okay.
You coming tonight and participating. And Mr. Merman will explain what happens next.
Sure.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Dasty, we are going to put you back on hold. Once the board of ed goes to private session, we'll allow you back in. But for right now, you're going back to hold.
Okay.
All right. And Mrs. Downing, next we have Dasty Murphy et al., correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Mrs. Downing, they're here.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. You just have to unmute your microphone.
There it is. Thank you.
Okay. I see Mr. Jerry Dasty.
Yes.
And is that Mr. Monahan?
That's Mr. Monahan. Hello.
Mr. Monahan and?
Martin Buckley. Nice to meet you guys.
I got to lean in just so you can see me.
I'm doing the same. Welcome, gentlemen. It's a pleasure to have you. Tonight, we're going to ask five questions to you. Each one of five of the board members will ask you the question. So we're going to start with Mr. Peters with question number one.
Evening, gentlemen. Thank you for attending. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know about the firm that you represent.
Could you hear the question, gentlemen?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Could you hear the question?
I'll read it. I'll read the question. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know about the firm you represent.
Oh, geez. Oh, you may have to turn up a little bit.
Just let me know when you guys can hear me. You're muted right now. Right now, you're muted. There you go.
There you go.
All right, we got it. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me clearly now?
Yeah.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe, what we ought to know about the firm you represent.
I can move that down to the mute. Yeah, let me try something.
We can hear you, Mr. Monahan.
You just muted, you have to unmute.
You can't do that.
There you go, you're good now.
You can hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll ask the question again.
We got it.
Okay, and your answer is?
Okay. It might be a three-part answer, at least a two-part. I'm going to ask Tom to handle most of the Board of Education stuff directly. But we've had a presence here in Lacy Township for 45 years. We've done a lot to support the town, we know the town. We've been supportive of the various activities in town in terms of contributions towards the football field and, you know, the shows. And our kids went to school. So in part, that's what we bring to the table. But I'm going to ask Tom Monahan, who, if you were kind enough to appoint us, would be doing most of the work about his experience. Where Ed starts to save all the heat.
All right. I just turned it, so can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. With regards to experience, I've had for the last 25 years, limited my practice really to three areas. One is litigation, school board, and some land use law. With regards to schools, I represented Tom's River Schools starting in 1991. I represented them for at least 20 some odd years with everything that they were doing, from building new schools, problems with students, problems with teachers, anything that went on in that school district, I took care of that. It ended when Mr. Rataco was lost his position as superintendent, you all know about that. And that's when I was not there. But for 20 some odd years, I did that, I did that entire school district with all of its, it was like 19,000 or 19,000 students, three high schools, you name it, and anything that was involved, I did it. With regards, and I had other school districts I was representing at that time. I had a stint at Lakewood Board of Ed. I represented them for three, three years and there were major numbers of issues there. Mr. Enzel Buck succeeded me. I don't know if you know about Mr. Enzel Buck and all his special education work, but it was a compromise that was made between the board and Enzel Buck. He became the Board Attorney. I represented Brick Township as special attorney for at least five to six years. I represented Berkeley Township Board of Education for a number of years. I now represent Manchester Township Board of Education. I've represented that district these maybe 25 years now. So I've had a long track record in representing school districts. And what I enjoyed the most, I enjoyed working with administration and teachers and just working with a staff of people that enjoyed their professional. And it's a pleasure to me to sit and talk with superintendents, the teachers, when they want me to talk to the principals. So I've done that. And I've also represented Central Regional for a period of time. So those are the things that I've done. I've done everything that the boards needed me to do. Open Public Records Act, meetings, you name the questions, they were there for at least 25 years, I've answered them. So I hope that answers the question. Hello?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Peters, thank you. So question number two, Mr. Polino.
Yes, good evening, gentlemen, Frank Polino, thank you for joining us tonight. Mr. Monahan, you kind of answered my question already because my question is based on a proposal requires a firm to have at least five years' current experience providing general school board attorney services in state. So I'm going to ask you what your experiences were and you already have. So I know you were Tom's River Schools since 1991. If I got out of anything that you were saying that you're currently with Manchester Township and who else?
At the present time, Manchester Township. But prior to, and in the area when I was representing Tom's River, I represented other school districts. As I indicated, Brick Township, I was special counsel for five years. I represented Berkeley Township Board of Education for a period of time. I represented Lakewood Board of Education for, I guess, three years, going back some time. And at Central Regional for a period of time. So those are the districts I've represented over many, many years.
Okay, just a follow-up, so if I can, sir. So in the law firm, will you be our direct contact? If your firm is chosen, so you'll be the contact for our board? And does anybody in your firm also have the experience that you're stating as a firm total? Or is it just yourself bringing it to the table from your previous firm?
You froze up, Frank.
I'm sorry, let me answer that, I could see Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Polino, can you hear me? I have a membership at the township Board of Education and I've done that for about six years now.
Did you hear that?
I, I'm sorry, what school district was he representing?
Barnegat Township.
Barnegat, okay, thank you.
Represented that for six years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Mrs. McAvoy for the third question.
Good evening.
Please.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, please tell us about your experience handling general contract work as well as student discipline matters.
Well, I think with contract work, the firm, Jerry's firm here has represented numerous governmental entities for what I think 40 something years. And I've also represented school districts with regards to contract law. There's a different statute that pertains to schools. But it's a matter of reviewing the contract and reviewing it according to the statute to determine if the bid or whatever we're doing is appropriate.
And what about experience with student discipline matters?
Yeah, I've done a lot of that. And Marty has also, I'll let Marty speak within a minute. But I've done everything with regards to student discipline down to the point that you can't expel anybody. That's just about impossible. There's really got to be something serious. And I've gone through hearings where we had students who needed to be disciplined. But the reality of it is that the student belongs to the district and you're going to have to put them in a, an out-of-district placement if you're going to discipline. But just the run-of-the-mill types of discipline hearings, I've been to the OAL when you want to. I can remember one case on our first start at Tom's River. They didn't want the young man to play at the Thanksgiving dinner football team because he had been drinking a couple of days before. And so I started out, within a couple of months of my tenure at Tom's River, going to the OAL to discipline the student, even though everybody wanted him to play, he couldn't play. And I've gone through those types of cases over the years with discipline.
Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Murphy.
And then I've also, as part of the attorney for the Barnegat Township Board of Education, I've also done a lot of discipline for students in regards to a lot of, a lot of issues we've had with cyberbullying and things like that. We've had long-term suspensions at the board level. So we've handled all those types of matters in the past six years or so.
Thank you.
Just bring up one thing that Marty brought up, that bullying. That becomes a question which I've had to deal with with the board on several, several instances where, I think the last one we handled where a student was alleged that there was bullying occurred, the team investigated it and then the student moved from the school district. So there was not going to be any hearing, but yet we were ordered to have a hearing because it was an issue even though the student is no longer part of that school district.
Right, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Scanlon, we'll ask the fourth question.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for participating tonight. My question is two parts. How do you view the relationship between the Board Attorney and the Board of Education? Also, what about the relationship between the Board Attorney and the senior district administrator?
You talk about the superintendent and how the Board Attorney acts with the superintendent and with the board? Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
All right. The reality of it is, this Board Attorney is hired by the Board of Education. The Board of Education chooses the attorney and hires that person to work for the district. I have never had the experience in all of my tenure where I've had a problem between the board and the superintendent. Those things seem to have worked out. There've been decent superintendents over the years. There were times I'd go to meetings and sometimes I'm sort of, the superintendent would ask me to explain something to the board. I explained it to the board, the board listens to me, and everything seems to work out as long as everybody's listening and I'm giving some parameters as to who can do what. And I do read the cases, and I know there are districts that have a lot of issues with regards to their superintendent. I've never experienced it, but I always thought because the professionals of the superintendent, you have decent people on the Board of Education with agendas only to take care of the children. And I sometimes would be sitting there explaining. I was at a meeting on Monday night and we had a board member say to the superintendent, "Well, I want to sit in when you hire these people." Now, superintendent had to explain, and then I had to chime in, that that's not the duty of a board member. A board member is not an administrator. The board member does policy. And we explained, we all talked about it that night and it was not an issue anymore. But that's, that's an example of how that could come up. And it was explained and it no longer became an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last question is presented by Mrs. De Sensa. Regina?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Downing. Hello, gentlemen, please tell us one thing which separates your firm apart from any other and why we should select you to be the next General Board Attorney for the Lacy Township School District. Can't hear you.
Yes or no?
That's better.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess it's a low microphone. I think the one thing that separates, or there's a couple of things that separate us from anyone else that you've been interviewing. It's the experience we have, and Tom has more experience than anybody in this county, as far as I know. The professionalism, the fact that we've been in Lacy for a long, long time and have, you know, been supportive of the school system and all that. And also, at my firm, we have a state senator and a state assembly person who are partners here. And there are times that your superintendent, that won't stop, obviously. I mean, Chris Conners has an elected responsibility and duty of when your superintendent calls to state senators, especially these days when we're talking about funding from the state and all the issues we have in Trenton. I think that's something which makes our firm stand out from whoever else you might be interviewing. So I think it's our commitment to the township which has been demonstrated for four decades and commitment to the district, the people we have working with us and certainly the experience that Tom and Marty have shown you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else speaking, Mr. Dasty, or?
No, no, I think, no, I think we're good. I think we're good on that one.
All right, well, I want to thank you, all three of you, for presenting tonight. We appreciate it. And Mr. Merman will explain the rest of the night to you. Have a good night, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to put you back on hold at this time. And once the board goes into private session, we will readmit you so that you can watch the rest of the meeting if you so choose.
I, well, will the board be making a decision tonight that we should wait to hear? Is that what you mean?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Downing, so the last interview of the night will be Stein, Subsy, and Tadashi.
Okay.
All right, and they're here.
Okay, Mr. Subsy, you have to unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you, good evening, and thank you for being a part of this tonight. We're going to have five questions that five of the board members will ask you. So we're going to start with question number one, Mr. Peters.
Good evening, Mr. Subsy, thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you believe we ought to know about the firm you represent.
Okay, thank you. I anticipated that there'd be a question asking about my background, so I kind of prepared a little statement about that. And as you know, I'm Chris Subsy. I'm currently serving as the Board of Education Attorney in this school district. I grew up in Bamber Lake and I was educated through the Lacy Township School System from kindergarten through high school. With the exception of a year or two when I lived in Seaside Park in my grandmother's house, I've always been a resident of Lacy Township. I have strong ties to the local community and I've served as a volunteer in many organizations. I've also coached youth sports for many years, including football, baseball, wrestling, softball, basketball, and soccer. I was asked to coach lacrosse, but I didn't know enough about the sports, so I didn't do it. The point I'm making here is, I care about this town, I care about this community. I went to college at Rutgers University and after graduating, I received my Juris Doctorate from Villanova School of Law. I'm licensed as an attorney in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I began my legal career with the law firm of A. Joseph Guarino in 1994, where I worked in a general practice specializing in real estate, land use, civil litigation, workers' compensation, and personal injury litigation. In 2000, I realized it was time for me to make a change. And at that time, I decided to transfer my practice to the law firm of Arthur Stein and Associates at the time. I actually sought Art out. I knew his reputation, I knew the type of work that he did. I knew he represented the Lacy School District and it's something I wanted to be a part of. So since 2000, I've been in Arthur's practice with him. Currently now, my practice. And during that time, Art continuously served at the Lacy Township Board of Education Attorney dating back to 1987. So it's been 33 years that my firm has been furnishing representations to the Lacy Board of Education. In 2016, Mr. Stein decided he wanted to retire from the full-time practice of law. And I took over. And from that time forward, I've been the lead attorney for the Lacy School District. And while Mr. Stein is still affiliated with my law firm and he is quite a resource, he's listed as of counsel. He has not just very extensive substantive knowledge about education law, he also has developed very unique institutional knowledge about the Lacy School District, its policies, its procedures, its operations. We have files that go back 33 years that other attorneys simply can't duplicate. You can't just create that type of knowledge and information. So that's the answer to the question about the background.
Okay, thank you. Question number two will be presented by Mr. Polino.
Thank you, Mr. Stein, good evening, Mr. Subsy, how are you? Good evening, I'm wonderful. So, you know, the resume that you presented, as well as the other firms, I'm looking at your experience, but I'm going to read the question. So, request for proposal requires a successful firm to have at least five years' current experience providing general school board attorney services in the state of New Jersey. Now, obviously, you've been serving as our school board attorney for several years. Besides our school board, can you tell me who you're associated with within the past five years and your dealings with the other districts? Absolutely. So I am the lead attorney in the Ocean Gate Board of Education and in the Plumstead Board of Education. Plumstead is a K-12 school district, Ocean Gate is a K-6 school district. And I've been serving in the lead role since 2016. But again, we've been representing those districts for many years prior to that and I was furnishing services to those boards. I was regularly appearing at their meetings, dealing with matters, practicing law, practicing education law for those districts. But, you know, they would look to Art Stein as the lead, whereas now they look to me as the lead. So I was still practicing education law and this firm was doing it respectfully on a very high level. Prior to that, the firm also has experience of representing Central Regional on a major litigation, special counsel arrangement. We've also represented Island Heights School District and the Stafford Township Board of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question number three will be Mrs. McAvoy.
Good evening. Please tell us about your experience handling general contract work as well as student discipline matters.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see. General contract work. General contract work, I have a lot of experience doing that. As part of my private practice, I regularly review contracts, interpret contracts, draft contracts, make arguments about the interpretation of contracts. All that work is done, whether it be land use planning, whether it be real estate transactions, whether it be leasing, negotiating those types of documents, or simply interpreting them and giving advice to clients. All that bodes well to an attorney that is serving a school district doing the same types of work. So I'm very familiar, knowledgeable with that kind of work. What is important about my experience and the firm's experience is we also have litigated contractual matters. So it gives you the perspective of seeing the other side of, of what's going on and how a court of competent jurisdiction would review those contracts and interpret those contracts, which is an advantage when you're drafting those contracts and preparing those contracts and interpreting those contracts. So that would be my answer in the, you know, in the contract side of things. In terms of student matters, student disciplinary matters, yes, I'm very familiar with those types of matters. With myself and my firm has a lot of experience dealing with, you know, various disciplinary matters, whether it be a long-term suspension hearing, whether it be a HIB appeal. Whether it be a constitutional issue, and that's something that is worth just taking a minute and talking about a little bit. You know, there, there was particularly, a particular constitutional matter involving students that generated a lot of publicity, a significant amount of publicity. And I think from that experience, the district learned, the district learned a lot. And I think one of the things the district learned about is that it's important to be proactive with your professionals and particularly with respect to the utilization of legal counsel. It's important to seek the advice and be proactive and get that advice from the attorney before decisions are made. Because once a decision is made, it's hard to undo it. Art Stein used to always say this, and I'll say it, you can't unhonk the honked horn. It's, it's already honked. So that's my, you know, my comment to that answer. But yes, we have a lot of experience dealing with student matters and very comfortable handling those types of matters, as we've had many.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to question number four will be Mr. Scanlon.
Good evening, Mr. Subsy, and thank you for participating tonight. I have a two-part question. How do you view the relationship between the board attorney and the Board of Education? Also, how about the, about the relationship between the board attorney and the senior district administrator? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. So those are two questions that kind of come together. They're different, different relationships, different experiences, but they, they merge at the end. So at the beginning, the client is the board. The Board of Education is any school board attorney's client and that's who they represent. And that's ultimately what their job is, is to represent the school board and the school district. In doing that, there's, sometimes especially people in the public get confused about what the attorney does and who they represent. Because, you know, in Lacy, for example, there's seven members on the board. There's seven individuals. Those individuals are not the attorney's client. The client is the board itself as its own entity. And obviously, you know, the representation is as to the board as a whole, not any individual interests that may exist. So, you know, along that and representing a board, it is essential to have a good, working, professional relationship with the board president, because you're going to be dealing with the board president, addressing matters on a regular basis. Because that's the contact from the board that you're going to have most of your contact with. And I think that's something over the years that I've been able to have success at and having that relationship. The second part of the question goes to the relationship with, you know, the central office or the school district's high-level administrators, particularly the board, the business administrator and the superintendent. And they're not the clients. And that's something that is important to realize, they're not the clients, they're employees. But there's people, they're professionals and they're people that it is essential for the attorney to have a good, working relationship with, because there's going to be a lot of dealings and communications and we're going to work together on matters. And there has to be a good relationship there. It's essential, it's important. But the client is the board, the board is the client. The board makes the decisions and it's the attorney's job not just to assist the board in, in enabling them to make the best decisions, but to make the board, you know, look, look good. You know, that they, they're educated in the legal issues that are involved and they appreciate and understand the issues that are in front of them, especially when it involves legal questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer.
Okay. Mr. Scanlon, you're good?
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
Okay. And the last question, Mr. Subsy, will be asked by Mrs. De Sensa.
Hello. Please tell us the one thing which sets your firm apart from any other and why we should select you to be the next general board attorney for the Lacy Township School District.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sensa. Well, it starts with, you know, who I am. You know, I'm a lawyer, I've been practicing since 1994 and I've, I've generated a lot of experience. I've, you know, I've tried a lot of cases before various tribunals. I've done lots of different types of work in private practice, which I think complements and enhances my ability to furnish representation in the area of education law to a school district. So I start back with the experience I have. But I think what, what I would argue, what separates me from somebody else or my firm from somebody else is that my heart is in this town. I grew up in this town. I was raised in this town. I went to school in this town. I, I went my entire educational career in this town. And when I went off and I, you know, went to college and I went to law school, I came back to this town. And I chose to live in this town and I want to live in this town because it means something to me. It means a lot to me to be representing the school district that I was a part of. My, it's my hometown, it's my school and that means something to me. You know, when I was in high school, I actually received, you know, you get these awards in high school, you know, best dressed, best this. I got most school spirit. And I think I got that from my peers when I was in high school because cared so much about the school, about the Lacy Lions. And that hasn't changed. I still care about this community, I care about this district, this is my school, I care about it very much and I want to see it do really well. So to me, if you ask me what sets me apart is it's my heart. My heart is in this. I care about this. Sometimes as a school board attorney, people don't like you because you're making decisions. But my heart is in this. And I, I, I'm going to work hard for every single one of my clients that I represent. I'm going to put my best effort into it. But you know what, I feel like when it comes to the Lacy Board of Ed and the Lacy schools, I'm going to work a little bit harder because it just means a little bit more to me. So, you know, I hope that answers your question and I hope that gives you an appreciation of who I am and what motivates me and what I have to offer to the Lacy School District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Subsy. That's the five questions. And now Mr. Merman will explain what goes on next. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Subsy, I'm going to put you back on hold. The Board of Education will go, going into private session in a few moments. And when they do, I'll bring you and the other attorneys back out so that you can watch the rest of the meeting when the Board of Ed comes back.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Merman. We appreciate it. At this time, we will go into private session. So I'm going to ask Mr. George to make a motion so we can go into private session.
Certainly. Be resolved that a private session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, specifically the appointment of general board attorney. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be 45 minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action may be taken. Motion please?
Motion.
Second.
I can, this is, this is McAvoy. We are in private session.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to close out of here and go into another platform. See you in the other one, ladies and gentlemen.
Yep.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Education is in private session. So what I'm going to do right now is to change your permissions on this Zoom platform back over to attendee. Basically, what that means is that you will be able to watch the meeting when the Board of Education comes back out, but you won't have access to video or audio. All right, so that's where we're going to go right now. Okay, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience, as Mr. George said, the private session is going to be approximately 45 minutes long. At that point, the Board of Education will come back out. There will be a public comment section in this meeting. So if you would like to participate in the public comment section, when you're asked to do so, you'll be able to put your, raise your hand button on the Zoom app. Alternatively, if you're calling in by phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. Please don't do that right now. We'll do that when the Board of Education asks you to, once they come back out of private session. So like Mr. George said, will probably be about 45 minutes. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Just waiting for Mr. Decker.
The attorneys are currently in as attendees, so they can see and hear.
Thank you. Mr. Merman, are we good?
Yes, as soon as you have, everybody, you're good.
Just Mr. Decker. Okay, I think we can start. So hello, everyone, we're back from private session. And at this time, we're on number six of the agenda, public comment. Mr. Jeremy Merman will facilitate comments. Mr. Merman?
At this time, we will be accepting public comment. If you wish to comment, please hover your mouse over the raise your hand icon in the bottom center of your Zoom app. You will need Zoom app 5.0 or higher to participate. Alternately, if you're calling in via telephone, you may press star nine. You will be called intern. Please keep in mind that public comment is limited to five minutes. You may speak again after everyone else has finished, should you so choose. So at this time, if anybody does have public comment, please hit the raise your hand button. Okay. Amanda Buren, please state your name and address for the record after I'm muting your microphone and begin your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank all of the candidates tonight. And I'd like to start off by asking the Board of Education, why wasn't one of the main questions to every single firm, do they have any conflicts of interest with our district in any way? Because there are a few of the candidates that do have conflicts of interest. I think that's, that's extremely important of a question, especially since Mr. Subsy, our current attorney, has conflicts of interest and cannot participate in the union contracts and such. I, I would really hope that you guys, before you make your decision tonight, would even go back and ask that question to some of these firms. I would like to start off with kind of going down the line. I might go out of order, I do apologize, but I don't have the list of the six candidates in front of me anymore on the agenda. So I would like to start off with, um...
Mr. George, excuse me, Mrs. Buren. Mr. George, would you like to address that comment about the conflicts?
Sure, Mrs. Downing. Ms. Buren, in the issuance of the RFP document... Ms. Buren, in the issuance of the RFP document, certainly spoke to bona fide conflicts of interest as they are defined by the current law. And none of the firms that we have chosen to interview this evening have conflicts that are inappropriate or rise to that level, which would prevent any of them from being appointed as Board Attorney this evening. People's opinion may differ, but as the law goes, right now, there are none that we are aware of.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll continue by also... Thank you, yes.
Jeremy, Mr. Merman, would you mind backing up one page so that she has the names in front of her? Is that possible? Thank you.
Okay, so I guess I'd like to start off then with Dasty and Associates. It seems like Cape Heart and Scatchard seem to be very large. So I don't know that we want to use them in our district. They have very many other districts that they're already representing. That would be my only comment about them. But if I move to Dasty and Associates, I did some of my own research. And, you know, from what I found is that Mr. Chris Dasty himself, he was the campaign manager for yourself, Mrs. Downing, Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Peters, and Mr. Giordano. And, you know, I don't know, but I would say that that's probably a conflict of interest. I don't think we should hire an attorney in our town who also is the campaign manager for three or four of the board members.
So, Mrs. Buren, I did check, I did call New Jersey School Boards Association and spoke to an attorney there. And we also checked with Bruce, our labor attorney, Bruce Pedulla, and both agreed that there was no conflict.
Okay, well...
That's why they were interviewed.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm just giving you from a public citizen standpoint. I know that other people agree with me, and many other people would agree with me with that statement. So it's just something to consider.
And that's why we check it out for that same reason. Thank you.
The next one would be the father, Dasty Murphy McGuckin and Associates. You know, just today, there was something posted on Shore News Network Corruption Watch that their firm is extremely high-paid, they're not attending public meetings. There are multiple mayors that reported that Mr. McGuckin used heavy-handed tactics and political horse trading for the Toms River contracts. You know, there was another one out there that also said that they got Belmar contracts through pay-to-play violations. You know, this is something, again, that I just researched on my own. Whether you guys or the law says it's a conflict or not, it doesn't really matter. These are not the kind of headlines that we want in Lacey. The other thing with Jerry Dasty, Murphy, and McGuckin and Associates, you know, he fired his own son, Chris Dasty. He locked the doors on him and fired him by email. Like, I don't know that that's really the professionalism that is required for us Lacey Township residents.
Mrs. Buren, if we could keep their personal life out of the discussion, we'd appreciate it.
Mrs. Buren, also, my apologies, we're just about coming up on five minutes, I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay. The other thing was that the Dawson, Murphy, and McGuckin also, they're already township, they already represent our Township Committee and our MUA. And they're the ones that allowed that free water line for Joey Harrisons or Latitudes, whatever you want to call it, which really infuriated a majority of the taxpayers of this town. Taxpayer money was used for that. So, you know, again, those are just points that I'd like to make for that. I don't really think I even need to say anything about Mr. Subsy, who is our current attorney, other than to remind everyone that he was completely unprofessional when he was in the hot seat for the case that he stated, calling the citizens the chicken gallery and just couldn't handle the pressure. I mean, it's completely unprofessional that you would do that. Not to mention that now he's wrapped up in some ethics cases as well and is wasting more of the township's money. So on that note, in my public comment, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, if anybody else would like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand at this time. And Anthony Rosoli, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record, and begin your public comment.
Unmute my microphone, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening.
Yes.
Thanks for having a public input. I'd like to know where Campbell and Pritchnick's office is, Cape Heart and Scotch, Scratch Hearts offices, where the rest of them are pretty, I know where their offices are. But these two very large firms who want to represent our board and the taxpayers, where are their offices? They're going to send a representative to your meetings to discuss things with our taxpayers and you, from where?
So I'll take that for you, because I got...
Go ahead, thank you, Mr. George.
All right, that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was Mr. George. Go ahead, Mr. Riggs.
We look alike.
Yeah, people make this mistake all the time, don't worry about it. President down. So Campbell and Pritchnick, they're coming out of Jackson. They also have an office in Red Bank, but they're coming out of Jackson. Please reply to the Jackson office.
Okay.
Cape Heart, a little further out, Cape Heart was Mount Laurel. I do...
Okay.
But they do spend a lot of time, according to, you know...
And an office in Homedale.
Oh, yeah. Homedale too, for them.
All right, so they're pretty local, but to me, in the way I looked at them, representing Jersey City, you know, they have all this experience, they have a lot of ties. This is Campbell and Pritchnick. They have a lot of ties with the New Jersey School Board system and the NGA, NGA, union, and the systems as they are today, which I don't think worked for us. The taxpayer. Cape Heart and Scotch, Scotch and same thing, Scotch are, they're very big firms. They have five full-time attorneys that they're going to put in a school district that they have in their school district department. But they're a big firm, again, they don't have any school board inroads or personal friends like the other big firm claims to have. So do we really want to have friends and contacts in the state school board, in the state NGA system, in the state organizations of the education system? How do we remain objective if they have all these contacts? That's my question. As far as Dasty, he's a political hack in his organization, both of them. I don't want anything to do with either one of the Dasty firms, only because they have too much involved in the township as it is. I don't see where they can be, where they can be objective to our students and our taxpayers when they have so many political ties in the county and everything else. If you're going to, and Mr. Subsy and Mr. Stein's original, I have no compunction or willingness to recognize them as a candidate. The one that caught my eye, although it's political, is Mr. Coronado and his background as a prosecutor in the county, but without individual ties to Lacey Township. Meaning to me, he knows the county, he has our history, he knows all about us, but he doesn't have any individual ties to teachers, to school administration, to school administrators, to engineering firms, maybe engineering firms in the county, but, you know, not from the township itself. So to me, we're getting more objectivity from a guy who's from a law and order perspective, knows the law, knows the county, and my vote, if it was me, I'd go for Coronado. That's my two cents, that's my five minutes. It's up to you guys, have fun.
Thank you.
Oh, Anthony, before you leave, though.
Yes.
You weren't impressed by, that they were the former counsel of the New Jersey School Board Association?
Not at all. Not at all. Not at all. That's...
I mean, there's nobody that could be, there's nobody that could know more rules than the School Board Association. That's all they worry about, is training.
Yeah, I know. But the rules, the rules that they worry about lean more towards the NGA, the NJEA, and what happens at the state level and the way they want to run it.
No, School Board Association...
Not the way we want to run it.
No, School Board Association does what, deals with school boards. Forget all those other people, they deal with school boards only. They train on the school board.
All right, well, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion, Bobby. And I agree, you know, that if you think that's the way you should vote, you know, you should go for it. But I just, I just can't, I just can't go for it. I just don't believe that their objection, their objectivity is going to be there for what's happening in Lacey Township and the taxpayers of Lacey Township. And I'm a Lacey Township taxpayer guy, you guys know that. I'm interested in the bottom line. And by the way, where's the best dollar-for-dollar action going to be, guys? Where are we going to get the most bang for our buck? Who's the, what's the hourly rates? Does that come into play at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just as long as it's being considered. Again, thank you very much for your time.
You're freezing up, Mr. Rosoli. Thank you.
Okay, so if there is anybody else that would like to comment at this time, please make sure that the raise your hand bottom of the Zoom app will give you about 20 seconds or so here. If you are calling in via telephone, star nine will work as well. All right, and Mrs. Downing, seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Merman. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of Board Attorney for the 2020-2021 school year. I will turn this over to Mr. George to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. It's a pretty long resolution, those who are familiar with our award resolutions. They are storytelling in nature, so I'm just going to go through it. Whereas on Thursday, May 28th, 2020, the Board of Education issued a request for proposal for the purpose of entering into a contract for Board Attorney services for the 2020-2021 school year. It's a one-year contract. And whereas on or before Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., proposals were received from the following providers. I'm just going to give names and rates. Adams Gutierrez, Latibo Ray LLC, Partner 170, Associate 170, Para 95. The Bush Law Group, Partner 165, Associate 165. Campbell Pritchnick, Partner 150, Associate 150. Cape Heart Scatchard, Partner 170, Associate 160, Para 70. Coronado Law, Partner 140, Associate 125, Para 50. Dasty and Associates, Partner 145, Associate 135. Dasty Murphy McGuckin, Partner 150, Associate 135. Lennox Law Firm, Partner 160, Associate 160. And Stein Subsy Tedeschi, Partner 150, Associate 150, Para 60. In the evaluation process, the respondents' proposals were reviewed and evaluated by the following evaluation committee using the following criteria. Technical criteria, description of services, value of 40 points. Management criteria, which is business management qualifications, relevant experience, 30 points. Cost criteria, fee proposal, 30 points. Other factors, other than price, of course, in RFP is considered, and whose responses will provide the highest quality service at a fair and competitive price. The evaluation committee reviewed the proposals and scored on a 100-point system. Whereas based upon the evaluation analysis completed by the committee, the following providers were selected to be publicly interviewed at tonight's special meeting. Campbell Pritchnick, Cape Heart Scatchard, Coronado Law, Dasty and Associates, Dasty Murphy McGuckin, Stein Subsy and Tedeschi. Now therefore be resolved that award of the contract for Board Attorney services is recommended to the following provider. Cape Heart Scatchard, at the rates aforementioned, costs are in the budget appropriated from GAAP account 11-0230331. The term of the contract, again, July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021. Mrs. Downing, I would ask for a motion and a second and a vote.
Could I have a motion, please? Yeah, unmute your mics.
Motion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
We'll call Mr. George, the George, please.
Sure, Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Upstein.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
This is the Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so congratulations to the firm, Cape Heart and Scatchard. We look forward to working with you. And thank you for all those that participated this evening, we appreciate it. I also want to thank the RFP Committee in the process and for all of you for participating and working together as a team to resolve our Board Attorney selection. At this point, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night.
Night.